So, no attorney again?
Well, he might be on his way. I hope so.
You be one? Well, let's discuss.
All right, welcome everyone to October 28th, City Council meeting for Monday. If we could have a road call to establish court, please.
Perry Meyer.
Here.
Bob Thomas.
Here.
Susan Harmon.
Here.
Maggie Snyder.
Here.
Melissa Green.
Here.
And Terry McClung is absent with notice. We have five.
All right. Also, please turn off all your electronic devices as they interfere with hearing and recording devices. If we can stand and pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, get a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any additions or anything from anyone? I think at this point, because our city attorney's not here, if it's okay with the council, I'd like to move unfinished business, item number one, to the end of new business.
Okay.
Just in case our city attorney shows up. Anybody have anything else? If not, all those in favor of the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Get a motion to approve the amendments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor of the minutes that submitted, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We've got one application that's in your packet for Jody Breedlove. She's here tonight. If you want to talk to her after the meeting. And she is applying for position six of the planning commission.
Good deal.
And there are no public comments, from what I understand? All right. That brings us right down to our first item of business. If I get a motion to entertain, a motion for the discussion of the permanent entertainment district.
I move that we discuss the permanent entertainment district.
Second.
I got a motion as second. Who wants to take off?
I was asked by the entertainment district committee to place this on the agenda and to give you the printed information. But I'm actually no longer a member of that committee. And we do have two people here, if you'd like to hear from them.
You want to give the recommendation or you want them to?
The recommendation?
I got it.
I can read it over if you want me to read it because mine's real brief. This is what the committee came up with before, while I was still on it. And I was asked to pass it on to you. It's recommended to operate seven days a week. And the time would be each day from 1:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. In addition to all the restrictions that are in the enabling ordinance, the entertainment district committee recommends that the ordinance authorizing the permanent downtown district specifically require both silicone wristbands and to-go cups of not more than 16 ounces. And the boundaries would be Main Street on the south, from the southeast point of the property line for 173 South Main, which is Red's Pizza, and on the north to the southern edge of the Flint Street intersection. Armstrong Street from its intersection with Main to the north point of the property line of 82 Armstrong, which would basically just include the Cat House property. Spring Street from its intersection with Main to its intersection with Howell Street, German Alley, including that entire intersection. Then, German Alley East to its intersection with Cushing Street, including that entire intersection. Then, Cushing Street, Center Street from its intersection with German Alley to its intersection with Tibbs Alley. And then Tibbs Alley to its intersection with Main Street. And then there's a diagram attached to that. And I guess the mayor has submitted his own slightly different proposal.
I guess, would the committee like to make a... Any comments? You want to...
We're sort of here to answer any questions that y'all might have of us.
Okay, you want to...
Sorry.
Name and...
Kendra Hughes.
I'm Damon Hinky.
We're just... We're here to answer any questions if we can be of help or whatever.
Okay.
We've been working on this for a while.
Miss Snyder?
What's the rush?
I don't think there is one.
What happened to... We would like to get a whole lot of practice in before we even consider permanent. What happened to that comment?
Well, the permanent district... Permanent just means established by ordinance. It doesn't have to mean from now until perpetuity. Y'all could do... The reason why we're not doing a temporary one is because the... To do a temporary one in the size of this is really logistically burdensome for whomever has to do it.
Right.
And there's not really an organization that's best suited for that. So, our recommendation was to go ahead with a permanent one, which just means by ordinance. It means established by ordinance. It doesn't mean that it's permanent. You could do a sunset clause if you wanted to get the same effect as a temporary district.
So, still, what's the rush?
There isn't a rush.
We've had two temporaries so far. We were going to have a whole bunch of them to practice, see what worked, what didn't work. You can't figure all that out with only two. So, why are we even looking at this right now as opposed to sometime next year?
Because y'all put it on the agenda tonight. So, we showed up to answer whatever questions you want.
No, you guys asked to have this on. And I'm real confused about Sunday, really? This thing needs a whole lot of rework, rediscussion, and a lot of thought. And we need to get a lot more practice than way up there in that one little section over here.
Ms. Green?
I think Bob was before me, so I'll...
I just wanted to clarify. I don't think it's appropriate for you to speak as though the committee had wanted to go strictly straight to a permanent downtown district. Because the committee developed and submitted a temporary proposal, which the mayor pulled.
Right. So, we're here today discussing what's here. I mean, there's no point in going back over.
Well, you're...
I think it's important to circle around on one thing. The committee was originally set by the mayor to talk about a permanent district based on legislation that existed in the state of Arkansas. It wasn't a matter of should we, should we not. He just said, "Take this legislation, make it make sense for Eureka Springs, and then we'll go from there." So, that's really... At first, this became an urgency because of fall coming in and because of the Pine Mountain Village Entertainment District. But there is zero urgency at this point. We're just the committee coming back and saying, "This is what you guys asked us to do. Here's the end results." I don't... I haven't seen what the mayor has on his paper. I just know what we have presented to you.
And basically, just a quick thing. We've met for eight weeks, two hours a week, basically, for eight weeks. So, we've had 16 hours into this. And we're aware that we have answered questions or heard questions that y'all wouldn't have the answers to. I don't think there is a sense of urgency. This is... We're putting it up for discussion. We didn't present an ordinance tonight for that reason. I would recommend a workshop, you know, where y'all can... And the community can ask us questions. Ask us the questions that we've been, you know, going over for months and months at a time at this point. But the reason why we went ahead and brought it to you now, Ms. Snyder, is because we're kind of at a standstill in committee. You know, at some point, we need some feedback from y'all so that we can adjust this to whatever the public and the council needs, and the mayor. So, that's why we're here, basically.
Ms. Harmon?
I just appreciate that they've put the time into getting the information to us so that we can determine whether or not it is something that the city needs or not. I think we've had some events that have happened, and they've been successful. And from what I understand, we haven't had any huge issues from the two that we did have, correct? So, it is something that is available to the community. It is something that was passed by the state of Arkansas to allow us to do this. So, I think, you know, any opportunity we have to at least discuss it, I think it's great. And like I said, I do appreciate you putting all the information together because you took the time to ask the questions, to talk about it, to discuss it, and to figure out at least a draft for us to go from there. So, thank you for doing that.
Thanks.
Ms. Mar?
I think that, as you suggested at the workshop, Mr. Mayor, that we should have a public hearing at this point. Invite the public, have it here at the auditorium, and listen to what the public has to say before we go any further with an ordinance.
Ms. Green?
I think... I agree with Susan. I think this is a good thing. And one of the things that I noticed is that there was a lot of young business people involved in this. And they're our future. And they're seeing stuff that I think we should look at. I don't get the feeling that they're trying to rush this. I think they want the same things that I do. You know, the public hearing, a workshop. If we don't start this till early next year, it's not going to... You're not in any hurry, are you? But I think we need to move forward. I think it's something we should explore. And obviously, Butch, you have talked to... You've put up one, so you've talked to the police chief. And is he pretty much on board with this?
Well, my recommendations more or less mirror his recommendation. And that's cutting it down to three days a week.
Okay.
Keeping the same time. Now, what I didn't put into mind, but the mayor agrees, is doing the sunset clause. So, we can do this baby steps. I'm not making it permanent, but until the end of... When's the end of Mardi Gras? End of March, end of February?
February, yeah.
End of February. Put it at the end of February. Then we would know how this entertainment district will work.
Yeah.
At that time, it would come back before the council again.
That would be perfect. I think we should entertain moving forward and schedule a workshop and probably a public hearing and move on.
Ms. Green?
I'm Ms. Snyder, rather.
Okay, I'm going to ask again. What's the rush? We have Halloween coming. We have Thanksgiving coming. We have Christmas coming. We have New Year's Eve coming. Why can this not wait until like next spring for a workshop and a discussion? And guys, I'm not holding anything against you guys for doing all this work. I think it's great. I love seeing our people get involved. But let's quit rushing. And when I see something like, Damon, what you gave us, number two, shopping. Drinkers surveyed said they were more prone to impulse buys while shopping while drinking. I'm sorry. And I was a GM over five shops for 15 years. When drunks came in on the weekend, and they would come up with like $400 or $500 worth of t-shirts, I would ask them, "Are you sure you don't want to come back tomorrow?" I'm sorry. I don't like using booze to make sales. That's ridiculous and asinine. And I sure as heck don't want Eureka knowing that we're a drinking city so we can make money. You guys really need to think about this, all of you.
Mr. Thomas?
I think the best approach is to have council authorize drafting an ordinance. And at that point, you could consider having a public meeting. Because if you go to a public meeting with just ideas, you don't really know what you're going to come back and write your ordinance. So, I would make a motion that we authorize our lawyer, our city attorney, to write an ordinance. And then, when the ordinance is written, we can sit down and we can decide when we want to have a public meeting and what dates we want it to operate and if we want a sunset clause. That can all be done after there's an ordinance to look at and consider.
I'll second that.
Okay. Got a motion as second to write an ordinance establishing some basic outlines. Is that correct?
Yeah, taking the recommendations of the entertainment district committee and write an ordinance.
Ms. Harmon?
I just want to clarify what you were asking for through, say, February or March. Can you just clarify?
That'd just be at the end of that...
The whole thing is a temporary.
Just a sunset.
Come back to the council for... To look at reestablishing the entertainment district. In other words, just got a sunset clause. At the end of February, it stops.
But it's not permanent. It's...
It's permanent until February.
Okay. So, we're not going to say it's temporary. We're going to say it's permanent.
The difference between temporary and permanent is you've got to have a sponsor for temporaries. Temporary is for a limited period of time. And somebody's got to go out and set up the... There's a lot of work involved in doing temporary. We're not in the business. The city's not. And that's a problem we ran into of being a sponsor for temporary districts.
Because you've got to do all the work. You've got to get all the approvals you've got to do.
Exactly.
Okay.
And we got to find the liquor... Somebody holding a liquor license to... You know, audience. So, it needs to be a specific individual or organization.
Okay. So, your recommendation is a permanent with a sunset or with an expiration?
Exactly. And there's other... Some other differences in the clauses and locations. But yeah.
Thanks for clarifying that. I was confused on that one. I disagree with Bob. I think there's plenty of information from the committee here for a public meeting. I think this is all we need to show the public is all this stuff right here so they can give their opinion on which direction they want to go.
Do you want to get some clarification?
Okay.
I didn't hear Bob say a sunset.
He didn't?
No.
No.
So, you're not anticipating... That's not part of your motion?
My motion was to draft an ordinance based upon the entertainment district recommendations. And then, at that point, we could take that ordinance and amend it as we wanted to amend it.
We could have workshops?
Right.
And public hearings during this time?
I just want to make sure they hadn't said anything about sunset. Okay.
He didn't. All right. Ms. Green?
I...
Ms. Snyder, rather?
Okay, so you got me thoroughly confused. What is it that you want us to pass with the sunset?
No, sunset doesn't have anything to do with it at this point.
But what's all the talk about sunset?
My recommendation with the sunset clause into February.
For what?
Mr. Thomas's motion is to take the committee's recommendation and establish it and formulate it into an ordinance.
I understand his part. I don't understand your sunset part.
It's irrelevant at this point. What we're talking about is Mr. Thomas's ordinance, which doesn't deal with sunset clause.
So, you're talking about, for Bob's thing, we would have a general ordinance, and we would then have workshops and public meetings to discuss.
Right. And at that point, we can change it. The council can change it to...
However it needs to be done.
How they want to do it, the days, if there's a sunset clause, the hours, however the council feels comfortable with whatever the public says.
Okay. So, in view of all of these holidays coming up, this is stuff we could like plan for early next year? All this work?
What, for the workshop?
Workshops and public meetings and everything else. We still have to get an ordinance written up.
First of all, I've got to get the ordinance written.
Right. So, that's what I'm saying. With all these holidays coming, would it not behoove us to say, "Let's get the ordinance going, and then we will start scheduling workshops and public meetings next year, early next year"?
I think that's what we're doing.
The ordinance has to do with writing the ordinance right now. I mean, the motions.
Well, we've had some ordinance that's delayed for a year, so...
Mr. Mayor, I can remember in a conversation with the police chief that he thought with the permanent district that he was going to need another $200,000 a year in his budget. Has he changed his mind about that? I'd sure like to hear from him.
On a different basis. That's if we go on seven days a week, then we need additional...
So, if it's three days a week and only $100,000?
No. The mayor's comfortable with the... I mean, the police chief's comfortable with the three days a week. Ms. Harmon? But that's a different... We're getting off the tangent.
Yeah, I was going to say, we're not going to know until we know what we need.
The motion is to have an ordinance written based on the committee's recommendations. And so, that's... Anyway, that's the motion. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. Let's do a road call to verify.
Mr. Meyer?
No.
No?
No.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
No.
Three, two.
I'll vote yes.
Four, two.
All right. I'll take share of that at this point in time. All right, get a motion to... I want to thank the committee and Bob Thomas, too, for all the work y'all have done. I know this is the next item, but y'all have done, put in a lot of effort. And I appreciate y'all very much for that.
I do, too.
All right. Get a motion to discuss Norris Street property.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right. We received, I think, probably the last council... The day of the last council meeting, we opened up the bids. Well, we didn't open up any bids because we didn't receive any bids on Norris Street. So, at this point, we are still on the property. We did not receive any bids on the property. We do have a letter from the hospital commission. We've got the chairperson here, Dr. House, to talk about that. They would like to take over that building and keep it up with the maintenance and improvements and everything. And so, anyway, Ms. Green?
MJ's property is coming up on... It's on Zillow as an auction. Is it possible for us to put this on Zillow as this is a city bidding thing?
That's a foreclosure.
Okay, so, but we can't. It's not legal for us to do that?
No. We have to advertise, and that's what we've done.
Okay. And Zillow's not advertising?
No.
Okay.
Ms. Green? I'm Ms. Snyder. I'm sorry.
In view of everything that we have all talked about, seen, done, so on and so forth, and in view of the hospital commission wanting to go ahead and keep this as part of the hospital property, it only makes sense that we do that. There's no way we're going to get enough out of it to make any difference anywhere else, anyway. And this has been with the hospital for, I don't know, how many eons. I would like to make a motion that we merely leave 25 Norris Street with the hospital commission.
Can I get a second?
Oh, I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion. Ms. Harmon?
I just have a question. As far as posting, just as a clarification, what is required and what additionally... Is there anything additionally?
What we pay for what?
From the city in order to post that that is up for bid, that property? My understanding is it just goes in how many papers? One, two?
We went in... We posted it twice. We did the local papers, and we did state papers, which covers the entire state of Arkansas.
Okay. So, are you able to do anything additional to that? Send letters out to realtors or anything like that?
All the relatives were aware of it.
All of them were aware of it?
Yeah. Mr. Thomas?
If the hospital commission rented this house out to another doctor or clinic or whatever, how would we know that rent was being collected as it should be?
That would be up to the commission. And since they would have a daily maintenance on that, I'm sure they would keep tabs of that. I would like the council to realize the reason the rent wasn't collected on this was because we didn't even know we owned it.
Correct.
It's not the fault of anybody, except every year you have council turnover, you have mayor's turnover, and there's no consistency to know what the property is. So, now we've got a commission that's keeping... Would have a track of it and would be maintaining it and would be utilizing it. And so, I think they would be able to keep track of it, similar to what other facilities they have.
It was just my understanding that the commission was the ones who originally rented it out and did the contract for rent.
That was between the city... It ended up between the city and the doctor. And it got dropped. And it was the city, wasn't the hospital commission.
Oh, okay.
Even though they may have done that, it ended up in between the city.
Okay. But if... In this situation, would the city be the landlord or would the hospital?
No. The hospital would be taking it over and would have all rights and uses of that facility.
Okay. And if they collected rent, that rent money would be theirs?
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Ms. Snyder?
I was just... I don't think they'll ever forget this one again. Yeah. I don't think that'll happen again. And I have also heard one of the biggest drawbacks to trying to sell and stuff is because of the helicopter situation. As a crow flies half a mile and it rattles my house, people just... And doctors are used to it, if that's who you rent to. They're used to that noise.
There are several issues. One is the zoning. And the use that it's set up as a doctor's medical clinic. And so, that was the essence of it. It makes sense to me for the hospital to take it over.
It does too, yeah.
Well, that is, it is, it is zoned R1, so-
It's residential, but it's been used as grandfathered.
Well, but it ceased being used as a doctor's clinic, so-
Technically, it's still, it could still be, because up until just recently, it still had medical records in it too.
Well, what has changed with the hospital commission? The last time you were here, Doc, you said that you didn't have the wherewithal or the desire to maintain the building.
The commission discussed it and went over and viewed the property and felt like that it made sense. And if the city was not able to dispose of it, then we would want to go ahead and take care of it, so.
Roof needs repair right away and several other things?
Yes.
Okay.
I know we're talking, we're going to be talking later about auditorium project. Is this, were we counting on that money?
No.
Okay, all right.
Well, actually, we were thinking about it.
Well, that's when we were hoping to get $100,000 out of it too. Anyway, any further? We have a motion and a discuss, a motion to-
Leave 25 Nora with the hospital.
To the hospital, all right. No further discussion? All those in favor, sing five, saying aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
No.
We're one.
Okay. All right, strikes. Thank you, guys, and we'll get with you and work this out, what we need to do. Thank you all very much.
Have fun. We want a party afterwards when it's fixed up.
Yeah.
Where am I here?
NV3.
Resolution for free two-hour parking in December.
I'll make a motion that we give the resolution a number and read for. Can read into records? Read passage.
Second.
All right, motion and second and discussion. Mr. Thomas?
I have a question. Who does, who authorizes the little stickers that go on the meters for this?
It's the police department. Now, sometimes Main Street was gotten involved with it, and we've had to come back and take them off because they did some things that wasn't quite right. But it's the city that does that.
And I think one time, when the city did it several years ago, it was, it was the city council has given you this free parking. And to me, I would prefer to read that the citizens of Eureka Springs, Eureka Springs are giving you this free parking. We, you know, for us to say, oh, yeah, we're going to give our tourists free parking, I thought was a little, that bugged me when I read it, and I wasn't on council back then. I was just a citizen.
I'll double-check and see, Bob, on how and who prints that up and make sure that if, I'm sure that it's a tape thing so we can print them.
Right, yeah.
And we'll make sure it says the citizens of Eureka Springs give you the two-hour free parking with a Christmas gift from the city of Eureka Springs.
All right.
Citizens of Eureka Springs. Ms. Snyder?
Is there any way we can make this permanent, since we haven't come up every single year and we pass it every year? Can we make this a permanent thing that during this time period, the city of, the city of Eureka Springs, which means our citizens, are donating parking meter money, so to speak? Can we do that?
I'd have to talk to the city attorney.
Would you please?
That's something that maybe later on we can look at.
Okay, well, because it's just, like, so we go through this every single year for, what, 10 years now? The first year was really cool. We had these really neat, over-the-meter covers. Yeah. Hats. But they got stolen in March.
Last year, I had several people ask me about the, about the parking meter, because the stickers evidently weren't obvious enough for them to realize that the, they were still putting money in the meters.
Somehow, they must have figured it out if they were asking you about it.
Well, actually, I told them that it was free.
What? What? Don't thank you. All right.
But, yeah, I'm all for the resolution.
Anybody else? All right.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Five, zero. Resolution number will be seven, six, four. A resolution removing the requirement of paying the parking meters on Spring Street and Main Street and establishing free two-hour parking from December 1 through December 31, 2019. Whereas the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, in an effort to promote business for the city during the period of December 1 to December 31, 2019, desires to establish free two-hour parking on Spring Street and Main Street for on-street metered spaces in Eureka Springs during the period of December 1 through December 31, 2019. Now therefore, be it resolved by the city council of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, that section one, free two-hour parking is established on Spring Street and Main Street in metered spaces in Eureka Springs during the period of December 1 to December 31, 2019.
All right. Okay, that brings us up, next item is update on the auditorium.
Sorry, what was the round?
Motion to discuss.
Our resolution number was-
Seven, six, one? Yes.
Okay.
No seconded?
A motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss.
Seconded.
All right. And your, I gave you all, when it first came in, I'm sorry I didn't get this until late this afternoon, from the architect, sheets showing the extent of the project for the remodeling of the basement of the auditorium, basically with the elevator shaft, and also remodeling and adding, I guess not remodeling, but adding an ADA bathroom in the southeast, southwest corner of the basement. The elevator will be large enough for its 1,500-pound capacity for not only being for people, but also for freight, so the CAPC can use it on there. One of the things we're also doing, adding in here on the electrical is, and this was a suggestion that came up actually last month, was be able to add audio/video downstairs to the auditorium. So when we have concerts here, and the concerts are sold out up here, we can show them downstairs on a big screen.
Good idea.
At the same time, still sell-
Simulcast.
Simulcast, exactly. And so, we will, I'm excited about that. That opens up a whole venue for the auditorium downstairs. One of the things I was at with Old Crow Medicine Show was the people standing up in front of me, and, I mean, they were having a ball and they were dancing and everything. I just couldn't see over them. So this would allow them an opportunity to be downstairs. And personally, some of those big screens are just, are even better than being in person. I mean, it's the same thing. So, I'm excited over this whole concept of what we're doing, plus it's a venue that 's afraid for other venues down there. Our plan at this point in time is to have the drawings and specifications completed in the next week, 10 days. We're still, this is kind of our preliminary, and we're making sure everything's coordinated with everyone. And then advertising for bids and then opening bids on December 19th, which is a Thursday. And then we'll have a meeting on the 23rd, so we'd be able to announce to the council the bids on the 23rd. Also, I'm working with the CAPC and hopefully, because of what we're going to do with the simulcasting, the big screens and everything, to get them to consider putting in the money to help us fund this.
Okay.
Lonnie's pretty much assured as we can find the money. If we can get them to pay half, we shouldn't have a problem of going ahead with this project. So, Ms. Harmon?
I have a question, because we did talk about the kind of odd underground when we're doing these concerts. Somebody said there is a bar down there?
Not real, there's a, there's a keg mach, there's a, I don't know what you call it. There's a, a place for a keg, that you can put a keg in there, a keg tent.
Okay, because the-
But it's no good.
Okay, because the thought was, since you're doing all of this, is not only the video, but also being able to serve drinks down there to alleviate some of the congestion that's upstairs.
Exactly, yeah.
And then for those individuals that are down there during that time, even if it's on a regular basis, not just when there's overflow, but to offer that as an opportunity at a lesser amount than coming upstairs to the concert. So, I guess I would ask if that is something that is, is, would be feasible within a reasonable amount, because it'd be silly not to have that opportunity as, as far as having a bar. Now, I don't know what the bar would look like. It might look similar to what we have here, but at least we would have, we would have that as a thought in the plan going forward, if that's what we were going to use, if we're going to do-
At this point in time, that's what we're planning on.
Okay, so you do, you do have the discussion of adding a space for bar?
Yes.
Okay. And then, I remember there being some preliminary costs that were thrown around originally. Are you saying that you're not going to say anything until you get bids?
Other than the cost?
Yeah, because I remember, I thought we, you said at one time around 160?
It's still, that's what our estimate is. It's about 135, and then we have AE fee, and then we've got a 10% contingency fee to make it up to 160.
Okay, and then, the elevator was the larger of the two talked about elevators, correct? Because there was a- The elevator you had wanted to do was the larger. Originally, there was a discussion of two different sizes.
Correct, this is the larger.
Okay.
This is a 1,500-pound, as opposed to the 750.
Okay.
Yes, sir?
There was talk with the ADA committee about power, when the power goes out, generator or something to get this up, yeah.
There'll be emergency lights. Is that what you're talking about?
Well, if, in order to be ADA, isn't that right, Bob, that we would have to have some sort of supplemental electricity to operate the elevator?
I don't, I don't think so. I mean, I've-
I've never seen-
When I've read about high-rise buildings on fire and stuff, it's like people are carrying wheelchair occupants down the stairs.
No.
Yeah, I've never heard that in the ADA requirement either. If you, I mean, I don't know what it would cost.
I'm just thinking back to the World Trade Center, quite frankly, and all the stories.
I do believe Kim mentioned that when you all did your presentation.
I don't remember, in my experience with ADA, I've never seen that. I'm simply, I'm like Bob, high-rise elevators, when they go out, people are being carried down. Anyway, that's where we are right now on the, on the auditorium. Any other questions?
No. I love the exterior.
The what?
The exterior.
Oh.
That's, that's looking really nice.
Yeah.
That's a real big improvement.
Thank you, Boach.
No, you're welcome. All right, this brings us up to a discussion of the proration, prorational share agreement for the district court judge. Motion to discuss?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right. Should have a resolution in your packet noting the share, that our share of the cost. Let's see, do you have a copy of that? We share this between Madison County, Berryville, Huntsville, and Green Forest.
Seven partners.
Seven partners. And our share is the amount of $8,378.57, which is actually a lot less than what we used to pay in through there. So anyway, does anybody have any questions? Mr. Thomas?
I would just move to assign the resolution a number and read it for passage.
Second.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Five, zero. The resolution number will be seven, six, five. A resolution authorizing mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, to execute a proportionate share agreement for the state district court judgeship base salary for 2020. It resolved by the city council of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas. The mayor of the city of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, is hereby authorized to execute a written proportionate share agreement to fund one-half of the base salary of the district court judgeship for fiscal year 2020. The remaining base salary of the district court judgeship shall be paid by the state. The proportionate share agreement is equally divided among the following entities. Carroll County, two shares. Madison County, one share. City of Berryville, one share. City of Eureka Springs, one share. City of Huntsville, one share. And the city of Green Forest, one share. Each share shall be in the amount of $8,378.57 for the fiscal year 2020 among the shareholders in this agreement.
All right, thank you. That brings us up to our unfinished business, and the city attorney didn't ever showed up.
I would like to postpone this till the next meeting, because I have a couple questions.
Okay, so we got a motion to defer this ordinance to the next meeting. Any further discussion? All in favor, sing five, saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? So moved. Agenda setting for next time. Anyone? Ms. Harmon?
I have a question. You know, we've discussed a lot of things that have happened over this past 2019. Some of the items that we did discuss and had initiated or enabled the city to do were some of the sewer, or some of the water finding studies and things like that. Is there any way we can get an update? Or is that typically done at the end of the year as to the things that we've, the projects that are outstanding? Just to get a follow-up on, on where we're at on some of those.
I can have, are you wanting a follow-up on, on waters?
Well, you know, we did the one on the, the group that was coming in to do the additional on the, the water leaks, right?
Okay.
Then we'd had the, the solar thing most recently. Things like that that have come up over this past year, is there a way to get an update on those?
Usually, we cover that during the State of the Union.
Okay, so-
At the end of the year.
State of the city?
State of the city, I'm sorry, State of the city. State of the city union.
Okay, so if I wanted to find out about anything specifically, would you just say, maybe I should just bring a list of items?
Or just ask me a little bit?
Just ask?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else?
Go ahead, Bob.
Oh, I was just going to say, council needs to set the date for its 2020 budget review.
Yeah. And we do have that, so I was, the council wanted to go ahead and set a date for the, on that right now? Ms. Harmon?
Tom, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to add it to the agenda. Can we do it now?
Why don't I go ahead and have Kim get ahold of everybody and see if we can set up a date? And whether or not we have workshops that, for that?
Right.
Okay.
And also, in the past, we have had the department heads coming in two at a time to talk about their plans for the next year. Are we going to do that this year?
We've kind of, yeah, I mean, we can.
Don't usually-
I don't think we did that last year.
No, we didn't.
You know, it just depends on, on what we've got on capital. If they don't have anything in capital, then I hadn't had them come in. If they got something in capital, like the fire department, then I'll have them come in and talk to us. It's the way I've kind of looked at it, because otherwise, what will have our normal budget, which isn't going to not change much from next year? Ms. Harmon?
I have two things. Number one, I think it would be good for us to, going back to what Bob has just said about the department heads, to at least have the CAPC come in, because I know this is a new director, and she's been in-house since August. So, it would be nice to get a follow-up on her, just so that, you know, if anybody had any questions for her, that would be beneficial. So, I would like to see her come in and at least allow city council to ask.
No, we don't have any control over their budget.
I understand, but I think it would be good for her to give an update.
We can have her come in as a, as a commission and give us a little report.
And that's fine, and that's what we've done in the past. I think it would be beneficial.
I mean, up here in the commission, I'm going to do that without a problem.
Yeah, okay.
Instead of having the workshop. Because, I mean, what y'all do with their budgets-
I understand.
It's separate, yeah.
I know, but you have had them come in, they've given an update before, so-
Yeah, but we'll do that at, yeah, at a commission report.
Okay, I have one other thing.
Yeah.
Which is just totally off the wall, but I've gotten a lot of phone calls about it.
Battery must be-
People have asked me about it, is, y'all are going to laugh, but it's the feral cat issue in town. So, is there a way for us to have a discussion as to maybe just some of the guidelines for pets and things like that in town, because we have so many feral cats running around?
Clerk is wanting to say something.
Cats are not addressed in code regarding animals.
I thought they were when I read through. As far as tagging and things like that, right?
Excuse me?
I said as far as tagging.
When the event happened with the dog being attacked years ago, the, there was a very quick response by rewriting the ordinance for vicious animals that left serious gaps. At that time, I worked with a person to draft an ordinance that would work better and include addressing cats. That is still on the back burner. What you will see in code is, there might be a very vague reference to cats, but in terms of feral cats, age, tagging, that's not, but it could be.
What I would suggest is, if you want to come up with something, you want to have an ordinance written?
I would actually just like to have a discussion.
Okay.
So, just to start with the discussion.
I will second it as long as it's a discussion.
Yeah, because there have been so many people that have asked.
All right. Ms. Snyder?
We need to have a discussion of our December meetings. Since looking at my calendar, I'm seeing our second meeting is two days before Christmas. I would assume most people are getting ready for Christmas, if even in town. So, can we have a discussion of days or dates, whatever you want to call it, for a meeting in December? There's about five weeks to pick on it.
I thought we talked about that in our last minutes meeting.
We did, we didn't, November, we didn't do December.
Didn't do December, okay. All right, so discussion, December minute meetings?
Second.
I'll second.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Mr. Meyer, any comments?
My little dawson drug in a deer leg through the dog door last night.
Was that Daisy?
Petals.
Petals?
So, the question is, did he do it or did somebody else?
Who knows?
It was the feral cats.
She wouldn't tell me. The leg was as big as the dog.
Ms. Harmon?
Nothing.
Ms. Snyder?
What?
Any comments?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Chat's a comment here.
This year was the 11th year in the cemetery for Voices from a Silent City, which is put on and hosted by the Historic Museum. I personally think out of 11 years, this was the best one. In fact, I went twice. I went the first night and the second-to-last night. It was really good. Anybody who hasn't gone, please go. It's just absolutely, the things you learn, it's not being in a cemetery in the dark, because I actually went the second time in the daylight, is the history that you get of our town and our people, and it's just incredibly fascinating. So next year, well, I think they do it again in the spring, whenever, please try to go. You will thoroughly love it. That's it.
Ms. Green?
My animals have all been acting good lately, so I don't have anything to say.
Mr. Thomas? All right. Last week, I was able to... Fortunate to go down to Little Rock and receive a $200,000 Community Development Block grant for use at the city wastewater plant. This application was submitted to Northwest Arkansas Economic Development District, and I want to thank them and Glenn Booth for helping us write and secure this grant. This is our second grant from the Community Development Block grant that we received. So we've received about $430,000 from these two grants. First one was to help repair the tunnel on the creek down at Flint Street. And then this is going to go to repair the water line from the train station to the sewer plant. The city is the largest consumer of water out of anybody else. So we know there's some leaks down there, talking about water leaks. With the repair of this, we hope to cut that lead down considerably and keep us from having to pay such a large water bill. Which brings me up to the point, too. This year, we did receive the CDBG grant because Eureka Springs' income level exceeded the 50% threshold for low to moderate incomes. The last four years, we've been under that 50% level of income, and therefore eligible for these projects. Unfortunately, this year, after their survey, we are now above that 50% income, which is hard for me to believe. But that means more than 50% of our citizens are above moderate income level. And so we're not eligible for these grants. Berryville and Green Forest are, but Eureka Springs isn't. That's how Berryville gets their sidewalks, a lot of their roads, a lot of their water. So what I'm coming about to is that the census is coming up next year. It's important for all citizens to please fill out those census reports and census data. These are anonymous data, not anonymous information. But it helps the city receive turnback money to help the city fund projects. Also, after we complete this project, we will be putting out another survey, what we call a community survey, which will try to establish our moderate income level again to see. Because we really feel that our income level is below that 50% mark. But what the way they do those surveys, they do it a broadcast. And what we're going to be doing is sending out probably notices in the water bill. So if you receive these surveys, please fill them out. They're very important. And they are anonymous in one way or the other. You may get telephone call... Well, you won't get telephone calls. You'll get either in the mail, or people come to the door. And it's just important to fill those out. So our community depends on you, so please keep that in mind. Now then, our city offices will be closed on the 11th in honor of Veterans Day. So our next regular scheduled council meeting will be on 11/25. But in between now and then, we've got a lot of events coming up. We've got our Fall Diversity Weekend, November 1st through the 3rd, in the Basin Park and all over town. We have the studio tours that same weekend. We'll have 12 artist studios within five miles of the downtown. Though it's a brochure out, so anybody interested in seeing those, there's brochures out there for us. The Day of the Dead, the Dia de los Muertos, will be November 2nd from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. in the Basin Park. Also, on the 2nd, we got the diversity headliner, Lady Bunny, will be here at the Odd, and that begins at 8:30 p.m. On the 5th through the 10th, all over town, we'll have the plein air festival. This is a smaller plein air festival that mimics the one that we have in the spring. And so you'll see people out there painting all over town. On the 6th through the 9th, we'll have the Porce Palusa and the Porce Parade at 1:15 on the 9th. On the 8th through the 10th, it's food and wine weekend from various fine dining restaurants all over town. And then on the 11th through the 10th, we'll have the 72nd Annual Folk Festival. This is the longest-running folk festival in the United States. That's amazing. Music in the Park will start on the 8th and 9th. We'll have the Ozark Mountain Daredevils on the 8th at 8:00 p.m. in the auditorium. Marty Stewart, the Pilgrim, will be on November 9th at 7:00 p.m. at the Odd. And then the Folk Festival Parade will be Saturday, the 10th, starting at 2:00 p.m. at the library. So again, if you haven't had a chance to come down to the Folk Festival, this is a great weekend to come down and listen to a lot of good folk music.
The 10th is a Sunday, November?
November.
Yeah, that's a Sunday.
November the 10th?
Yeah, that's a Sunday night of Saturday.
Ah, it should be the 9th. Well, okay, it must be the 9th.